I'd like to call this village board meeting of June 1st, 2017, to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan? Trustee Light?
Trustee Sullivan's excused, sorry.
Trustee Meritado?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Schmidt, would you like to start us off, please?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Take your summer fun to the next level by attending Glendale Heights Fest, known as one of the western suburbs' premier events. Glendale Heights Fest is Wednesday, July 12th through Sunday, July 16th at Camera Park, 101 East Fullerton Avenue. Enjoy the North American Midway Entertainment Carnival, along with exciting entertainment, rides, and fantastic food booths. Enjoy a breathtaking display of fireworks at dusk on Wednesday, July 12th and Sunday, July 16th. Plan to spend a fun-filled week at Glendale Heights Fest with delicious foods and entertainment for the entire family. Avoid the long lines and purchase your Glendale Heights Fest wristbands online. Be sure to like our Facebook page to stay up to date with important information about this year's Glendale Heights Fest. And visit our brand-new Glendale Heights Fest website at www.glandalehighsfest.com. The next coffee with the mayor and village board is scheduled for Saturday, June 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Spring yard waste curbside collections are made on your regular or holiday-scheduled pickup days by Republic Services. All yard waste must be placed in either biodegradable paper bags or in cans clearly labeled "yard waste only." Biodegradable paper bags or cans must not exceed 32 gallons in size and 50 pounds in weight. Brush must be bundled, but brush must be in bundles not exceeding four feet in length, two feet in diameter, and 50 pounds in weight. Please remember that all single-family and multifamily residential units are required to utilize Republic Services for collection and disposal of refuge. When placing refuges and recycling totes outside for collection, containers are to be placed at the curbside, immediately adjacent to the street, without interfering or endangering the movement of vehicles. Please do not overfill your garbage, your garbage recycling bins. For any questions, please call Republic Services at (847) 981-0091. Join us at your neighborhood park party for some great family fun and the opportunity to meet the mayor and your district trustee. Park parties are held from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at various parks throughout Glendale Heights. Enjoy a picnic-style dinner, as you play games, and dance along with the day camp staff. Check out Glendale Heights Police Vehicles and Glen Side or Bloomingdale Fire Protection District Trucks. For more information on your park party, visit www.ghprf.com or call (630) 260-6060.
Thank you, Mike.
Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Get your 2017, 2018 Village Vehicle sticker today. The new vehicle sticker must be displayed by 12:01 a.m., July 1st, 2017, on the lower right-hand corner of the windshield. Passenger vehicle stickers are $15. Motorcycle tags are $12. Recreational vehicle stickers are $18, and trucks with V-plates are $25. There is an additional price schedule for trucks based on their individual weights. Qualifying senior citizens receive one sticker per household at no charge. Village ordinance restricts overnight parking on village streets to those vehicles having a valid vehicle sticker. For more information regarding the Village Vehicle stickers, call (630) 260-6000. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Meritado?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a variety of positions at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2O, Aquatic Center, and the Glendale Heights Park Recreation and Facility Department. Positions range from kitchen help, waste staff, banquet servers at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club, to lifeguards at the GH2O Center. Seasonal program counselors at the Sports Hub. Gain valuable experience and make friends for a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact Human Resources at (630) 909-5357. The Village of Glendale Heights, in partnership with the FOP Lodge 52 and the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce, invites you to the 18th Annual Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic on Friday, June 16th, with a 9:00 a.m. shotgun start at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club. This year, the Charity Golf Classic will be raising funds for Maker West Illinois, FOP Lodge 52 Community Enrichment Fund, and the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Fund. If you would like more information, wish to become a host sponsor or to buy raffle prizes donations, please call the Glendale Heights Golf Club at (630) 260-0018 or the mayor's office at (630) 909-5303. Help us make the 18th Annual Classic, Golf Classic, another great success. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojak?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Glendale Heights GH2O Aquatic Center is open for the season. Stop by and learn about swim lessons, private pool rentals, membership, and more. Come relax in the pool, dive in the deep well, or hang ten on the flow rider. Regular season hours are Mondays through Fridays from noon to 8:30 p.m., and Saturdays and Sundays from noon to 7:00 p.m. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Flag Day is celebrated on Wednesday, June 14th, in honor of our red, white, and blue. The following tips for proudly displaying our U.S. flag are recommended by the National Flag Day Foundation. Place the flag briskly and lowly ceremoniously. If you display the flag overnight illuminated, no other flag or pendant should be placed above or at the same level to the right of the U.S. flag. Don't allow the flag to touch anything beneath it, including the ground, water, or the floor. When your flag fades or wears thin, typically after one year, replace it with a new one. Remember to dispose of worn flags in the village flag depository located at the circular island in front of the village hall for proper military disposal. As of April 2017, we have collected a total of 6,086 flags and properly disposed of them in a respectable manner. For more information concerning the flag disposal program, contact me, village trustee Chester Pojak, (630) 909-5310. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroeder?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Teaching safety awareness to our children when they are young is very important, and in our efforts to protect their precious lives, the Village of Glendale Heights and the Glendale Heights Police Department strive to help by offering safety education through Safety Town Classes. Classes will begin Monday, June 12th through June 30th, and will offer three different sessions. Safety Town Classes are for children ages 5 through 7 years of age. Classes cover a variety of educational topics, including pedestrians, railroads, fire, bus, and bike safety, as well as stranger danger, first aid, and poisons, emergency 911, and seatbelt use. The registration fee is $15 for residents and $30 for non-residents. To register, contact the Glendale Heights Sports Department at (630) 260-6060 or visit Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we have, I need to appoint an alternate deputy village president for the period of time of June 3rd, 2017 through June 13th, 2017, and I would like to appoint trustee Pat Meritado to that position. A motion would be in order to accept the appointment. Trustee Light?
It's a move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have a recognition for a very longtime employee. And now I lost it. First, we have the proclamation.
No, I'm up for the mayor to have your speaker down. That's what I was saying. I'm sorry, Nick.
Is that what we went? Okay. I've lost the second page. There it is. Roger. This is a recognition of Roger L. Mabbett, our assistant village administrator. Whereas Roger L. Mabbett has worked for the Village of Glendale Heights for over 42 years and has spent his life making the village what it is today, a proud and progressive village for all people. And whereas Roger Mabbett started his career with the Village of Glendale Heights as a member of the Glendale Heights Police Department in 1974, dedicating his career to protect and serve the citizens of the Village of Glendale Heights. The Village of Glendale Heights was only 15 years old at the time, with a population of just over 13,500 residents. And whereas during his 30 years of service with the police department, he was instrumental in many of the changes within the department while serving as a patrolman, sergeant, commander, and chief of police. And whereas in 1974, when Roger joined the force, there were only 15 sworn officers and eight civilian employees. 30 years later, as chief of police, Roger oversaw 54 sworn officers, 27 civilian employees, and eight auxiliary officers. During his years in the police department, Roger played a key role in the growth and development of the Glendale Heights Police Force. He also played an integral role in the expansion and improvements to the police facilities that were needed to meet the public demands as the population continued to grow to over 32,000 residents. And whereas Roger continued to move up within the organization, and on May 22nd, 2005, was promoted to Assistant Village Administrator, a position which also includes serving as the Human Resources Director. In his role as Assistant Village Administrator, Roger Mabbett has been instrumental in also steering several key economic development initiatives. And whereas Roger's dedication to the residents of the Village of Glendale Heights has been exhibited through his association and collaboration with the DuPage Chiefs, Youth Commission, Chamber of Commerce, Character Counts, International Aid Committee, Government Agency Partnership, Disaster Preparedness, Police Pension, Neighborhood Watch, Citizens Police Academy, Glendale Lakes Golf Club Committee, and many others. I know you're going to miss this. Whereas Roger's vast knowledge of all aspects of village operations has made him a valuable asset to the village, and his professionalism, wisdom, and friendship will be greatly missed by the village board, staff, and employees. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Jackson, President of the Village of Glendale Heights, do hereby extend our sincere appreciation to Roger L. Mabbett for his years of hard work and dedication to the Village of Glendale Heights, and further congratulate him on a well-deserved retirement, and wish him happiness and good health in the years ahead. Is... There a motion to pass the resolution, proclamation? We don't need a motion to pass it, I guess. So if there are no objections, I will sign this proclamation? Being none?
You want me to talk, aren't you?
Not yet. Not yet, Roger. We're not, we're not done, Roger. We have a little video. Or PowerPoint. Little PowerPoint for you, Roger, so if somebody would cut the lights and Roger would turn around and face the screen.
Roger, I am going to miss you so very much. When I started at the Village of Glendale Heights, you became and have remained the best mentor that one could ask for. Thank you, Roger, for giving me strong support and encouragement to manage my own learning in order to maximize my potential, develop my skills, and improve my performance to develop my public-sector career to the fullest potential. Most importantly, you and I were awesome colleagues who were able to use each other as sounding boards to reach the best recommendations to the village board to continue to move Glendale Heights in a positive direction. I wish you and Sally best wishes on reaching all of your retirement bucket list goals, and just remember that you left behind a wonderful legacy of achievement, encouragement, and work ethic that will never leave any of your coworkers.
Dear Roger, thank you for being a great boss and mentor. The years I've been able to learn from your leadership were informative and will help to shape me professionally for years to come. May your retirement be filled with health and happiness. Congratulations.
Roger, I still can't believe I was a newborn baby when you started at the village in 1974. I just want to say thank you for being a great boss for the past 12 years. I have always admired your knowledge and your leadership. There was always something to learn from you. Enjoy your retirement down on the farm. We will miss you.
Dear Roger, it is amazing how quickly life's pages are turned. Somewhere in the young Holly's book of life 36 years ago, C.S.O. with Polly Wags and all, she met Police Officer Mabbett. I must admit, I still remember how I was terrified of you. Now, 36 years later, the Roger Mabbett I once was terrified of has been a great mentor and is a friend. You've always found the time to listen to me, help me, guide me, and give me good advice. While the village is made of many great and hard-working staff, you are part of the solid foundation that has built this community. I wish your book of life be filled with many new pages of adventure, health, and happiness.
Well, Roger, the time has come to finally say au revoir. You have taught me to stay calm in a crisis, sleep on emotional reactions, and that work is so much easier and enjoyable with the support of a team. A stiff upper lip is not always the best approach. I wish you the very best in your retirement and in all your endeavors. No more pink shirts, Thursday late-night board meetings, and emergency snowstorms forcing you to drive in a blizzard. Plaid shirts, driving your tractor, and sitting down on your porch eyeballing the next turkey in your fields to go in your deep fryer is a welcome and much-deserved alternative. Enjoy this new phase of your life with your family, and know you'll be very missed by many, many people. Congratulations.
As your career with the Village of Glendale Heights comes to an end, I want to thank you for all that you have done to help guide, mentor, and teach me over the past 16 years. Your knowledge, advice, and leadership have helped to shape me as a manager. I also want to thank you for helping me to keep things in perspective when necessary and offer up those moments that have always made my job fun. Enjoy your retirement. You've earned it. Your positive effect on the residents of the Village of Glendale Heights will be felt for many years to come.
Roger, it has been an honor working with you for the past five years. Your calm, logical approach to problems and crises have been a great example to me, and your amazing memory has helped answer many questions. You are a master storyteller, and your stories are not only entertaining, but also have given me a greater understanding of the evolution of Glendale Heights. I will truly miss your guidance and awesome sense of humor.
Dear Roger, 42 years of public service at one place is extraordinary, especially in today's employment climate, and it compares pretty darn well to at least two other notable 42s. Theodore Roosevelt was 42 when he was elected President of the United States. The three bestselling music albums of all time, Michael Jackson's Thriller, AC/DC's Back in Black, and Pink Floyd's The Dark Side of the Moon, all lasted 42 minutes. I am abundantly grateful that you gave this guy from Florida a chance some 10 and 1/2 years ago. Everything would have been perfect if you had just signed up for payroll direct deposit. Thank you for setting such an outstanding example, and may your retirement years be epic.
Roger, life begins at your retirement. Thank you for being a great boss. I appreciate all the knowledge and guidance you have taught to me and will use it to become better at my job. I have enjoyed all the stories and funnies you have shared with me over the years and will miss hearing more. I am wishing you and your family all the best as you enter into this new phase of your life. May you enjoy the extra time relaxing, as it is well-deserved. We will all miss you. Congratulations to you, and Redbirds forever.
Roger, thank you for all you have done to assist me with my career here within the police department. You took a chance on me as a new supervisor and have been a strong influence on me today as the chief of police. Your wisdom, understanding, knowledge, mentorship, and most importantly, friendship, will be greatly missed by myself and all members of the police department. I truly wish you a long, happy, and fulfilling retirement down on the farm. Have safe travels as you and Sally embark on the journey of retirement. Enjoy the fruits of all the hard work you have done for the past 42 years.
Roger, your journey with the village is quickly coming to an end, but the footprint you left on the Glendale Heights community will last forever. From day one of putting on that uniform as a Glendale Heights police officer, to your final minutes as you walk out these doors, you have impacted our lives every single day. You are a true professional, and the Glendale Heights community will miss you dearly. I am so proud to call you a colleague and mentor, but most importantly, a lifelong friend. In order to forever cement your legacy with the Village of Glendale Heights, the village board and I are renaming the Glendale Heights Police Department's EOC to the Roger Mabbett Emergency Operations Center. Thank you, Roger, for your 42 years of dedicated service to the Village of Glendale Heights, for your hard work, laughs, smiles, and for being a friend to all of us. Congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. We will miss you.
Where would you like me to talk?
Wherever you want to talk. If you want to sit there and talk?
I will sit here.
I have more for you, though.
Do you?
Just a little bit.
Okay.
You can talk first.
You know, you try and think, and I have tried to think all day today what the heck I was going to say tonight. Rock came in about 7:00 o'clock and said, "Do you know what you're saying?" I said, "I haven't got a clue." And she said, "Well, you better suck it up and say something nice." So I did. But as I start, there was a memory that comes forward, and it's, you know, we talk about 42 years, we could call it four decades. I like to think of it more as 1974, because that doesn't seem that long ago. 1974 just happened, I believe, instead of 42 years. But as I sat out tonight, Holly said, "Do you remember your first day?" And I do. And I told her, and she did too. And I do remember that first day, and it was odd, and it was fun, and it was exciting, and it became more exciting as time went by. And you never think you're going to be here for 42 years, but suddenly, the first decade goes by, and you're not even breaking into a sweat, and then it's 25 years, and then it's 30 years, and it's time to retire and think about other professions. And so I did. I will unfortunately always be a police officer. That is a job I always liked the most. But I certainly am thankful for Donna, who's here, who's my best one. She's my favorite. For giving me the opportunity, not that you aren't too, Mayor, you are.
Good thinking, Roger.
Good comeback, good save there. For giving me the opportunity to do something I never thought I would do. I've worked in five different police departments over the years, and started out at the old house on top of Circle Drive. It was an experience, and there are stories. But I think I promised Rock I wouldn't tell any war stories, at least not tonight. That may happen on the 14th. But there were stories, and there still are. We have the advantage here, I think, in Glendale Heights in that we are a family. We've watched each other grow up, get married, have kids. And that's what makes us, I think, special and unique, is that we are so close. And, you know, I would hope that we never lose being that close. I am ecstatic about retirement. My favorite Donna even said, "You'll know when it's time," and I knew it was time. I had done what I set out to do and far more. It was an experience of a lifetime, 42 years of it. And I thank the mayor and the board for having confidence in me and letting me continue and picking me to be the chief of police. I thank the executive staff, because we are all friends, and all of you are new, and there are several other executive staff members who have left out there, that we were all family. I guess I'll leave it at that, and I'll shut up, because I got, Keith has it in mind that I'm going to do a history lesson on the 14th, so I think we may talk about the history lesson. I think I'll get Donna to help me with that history lesson. But I think we'll talk history and the things that happened in 42 years, and we'll enjoy that on the 14th, so I hope everybody can come. But thank you, everybody, for being so kind. The Disaster Center is a surprise. I'm not sure, I better call it the Disaster Center anymore. We'll stick with the EOC. I am honored to have such a thing done that might be awkward to say. My daughter is here, and my wife is here. Hill, whenever you go in that room for any more training, my name's on the door just now. I don't have projects to catch up on. I've done them all over the years, but now my daughter has come up with her list, so I guess I'll stay busy in retirement. But thank you all for that recognition tonight.
Thank you, Roger. And Roger, if you would come up here and join. And Roger, if you would come up here and join your mayor and board, we have something for you. But you need to come up this way.
Wrong way.
This way?
So we can all get our picture with you.
I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Roger. For all these years, and here's a copy of your proclamation.
Thank you very much.
And this is a big watch.
Apparently.
No, they said you didn't want a watch.
Does that kind of fit in my pocket? Keep your word around your neck.
Yeah, maybe when you have those farm pants on, it will. The other way? Well, Roger, if you can figure out how to open this. Oh, that way!
There it goes.
Roger Mabbett, thank you for forty-two years of dedicated service to the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. And there's a clock that you can see.
And it's running, which is even better. Thank you.
You are very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll miss you.
Who's getting pictures?
Did you get everybody in here?
Are we ready?
We're ready.
We're as ready as we'll ever be.
Rock told me I had to smile.
Yes, you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Pat, even though you give me a hard time.
Up, here's his bag. And before we stop for cake, we have a very short meeting. So if everybody doesn't mind a couple of minutes, we will finish our meeting first. And then everybody has time to visit. Next thing is public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, you have the consent agenda before you. What is your pleasure? Trustee Pojak.
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritado?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business. New business, we need to remove item number two. So we will go on with item number one, which is an ordinance providing for the declaration of the general prevailing rate of hourly wages for the year 2017 to be paid to laborers, mechanics and other workers performing construction of public works within the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois. This is first reading. Item two is removed. Item number three is an ordinance amending the Personnel Policy Manual of the Village of Glendale Heights. That is also first reading. That is the end of new business, which brings us back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone who would like to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. And since there is no committee of the whole tonight, if anybody would like to address this board on any matter, this is your opportunity. Being none, a motion would be in order. Trustee Schmidt?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.